I ask that you stand for the pledge allegiance to the American flag and remain standing for our invocation given tonight by Counselor Striplin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we pray? Dear only Father, we thank you for the gift and the beauty of this day and for all the gifts of grace that you have given to us that we so frequently take for advantage. Father, we thank you for all the things that you've done for us. We ask that you be with us, open our hearts and minds tonight, that we are receptive, be with those that are lost loved ones this week, guard them, guide them, and direct them. Be with those that are guarding our country, both near and far away. We ask that you do these things in your most holy name, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, we call a roll, please.
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chambly.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Called a meeting to order. Character traitor of money's diligence, investing all my energy to complete the task assigned to me. At this time, we have approval of a minute, City Council meeting in public hearing September 2nd, 2014. Have a motion.
Second.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving those minutes signify by raising the right hand. And those minutes are approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone like to come in on tonight's agenda, please come to the podium, please.
Good evening. My name is John Paul O'Driscoll. I'm the solid waste officer for Otto County Commission, and I wanted to speak to you about Resolution Number Three, that is to adopt the Otto County's 2014 Solid Waste Management Plan. And this is a legal requirement upon us from A.D.A.M., or through state statute, and each of you should have a copy of the proposed management plan that we have been preparing. And I thought I would work backwards and have you let me know when you have enough about this document. But we completed a public comment period on September 2nd on the proposed management plan, and one comment was received from the city of Prattville with regard to grease recycling program. And so an addition was made, it's highlighted in yellow in the document in front of you on page five, and on to include grease recycling program as a goal, it reads, "It is recommended that Prattville and Otto County establish a grease recycling program for public use to divert grease from public sewers and separate tanks and create a beneficial use from this waste material." And then on page 21, another section is highlighted in yellow relating to that, again addressing a grease recycling program, but there's no specifics or timeline, but it is just stated as a goal. So this is the, this was generated following the public comment period, and then prior to that, the previous draft, Draft Two, resulted from collaboration with the city of Prattville, town of Ottoville, town of Billingsley, the Regional Planning Commission, and the Otto County Commission, and we had a number of work sessions where we went through the, this proposed management plan to reflect the current situations and project for future waste management in Otto County. And so, and prior to that, the original document that we started with back in March, I took the current 2004 Solid Waste Management Plan and used that as the base for preparing this document and using updated figures for population and tonnage and other details. And so this, this is ready for approval, and it would be submitted to A.D.A.M. for their approval, along with resolutions from the town of Ottoville, town of Billingsley, and from the county commission.
Thank you, Mr. O'Driscoll. Does any council member have any questions or comment for Mr. O'Driscoll? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
One thing to point out, important to note, last time the plan was done and submitted to A.D.A.M., the city of Prattville, Otto County Commission, and the other municipalities split the cost of $10,000, which was paid to an outside consultant, so this was done in-house, and there was no consulting fee needed for that, so we saved a good bit of money in that part.
Thank you.
By doing it that way.
Well, I'm sure those towns appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the council on any item on the agenda? Mayor, you have a report?
Yes, and I hate to break sort of a custom, but I will not be asking for a point of privilege tonight. But, you know, Friday night, we had our 175th year celebration, rededicated the Musgrove Fountain. It's a great event. I saw many of you guys here, and I appreciate everyone who came out, and also those of you who made comments. Musgrove family was very pleased, as we all should be, and have had so many various comments, seen so, very many different photos of that, I guess you would call it now, the famous Musgrove Fountain in our, in our, in our heritage park down there. I think it's just another amenity for people to, just another photo op for this community to be very proud of. As we're all aware of, the Yokohama Tire LPGA Classic has been holding events the past two days. They've entertained and educated our area of fourth graders today at the junior golf clinic. Dr. Broner, Mayor Strange, and I spent some time with Yokohama executives, building relationships and thanking them for investing in the tournament and our community. Top lady golfers of the world begin playing on Thursday, and I plan on attending some of these events and hope to see some of you guys there also. To have a worldwide, a world caliber of professionals come into our community is, says a lot for our community, I believe. But Saturday afternoon, we'll be putting on our Fourth Annual Worldwide Day of Play. Our parks and recreation have teamed up with police and fire to make this event even better than last year. We've invited Elmore County Commissioner Stephanie Smoke to attend since it's in her district. I've had, on good authority, that our SWAT team and fire personnel have gone all in on design and obstacle courses. I know you agree with me when I say teamwork helps us excel and achieve new heights. It actually helps make Prattville better one project at a time. On number three of the consent agenda, as you may all recall, to piggyback off of John Paul O'Driscoll's comments, is that approximately about a year ago, we had a Elmore County document that is very similar to the Otto County, since Prattville is in both Otto County and Elmore County. And so this is not a, it's a document, I believe, comes around every 10 years. But item number four, listen, I'm sorry, I need to back up. Item one is our budget. Just want to give Doug Mosley a compliment on his work that he has done to pull, help pull this document together. There's been various, various department heads that have, that have worked very closely together. Lisa Thrash and myself and so many others have worked to pull this document together to, and I know committees have worked very closely on that also. And just as a, as of recently, today at 3:23, Doug Mosley sent out an email just to all the department heads talking about preparing, be careful their expenditures, purchase orders, getting ready for the 2015 budget, and hopefully this will be approved in the very near future. But on item number one, it is the budget. Are there any questions, comments, or anticipated amendments that I might be able to answer or comment on at this time? If not, item number four is set holidays for 2015. If you recall, last year when we were visiting this same item, it was intended to have President's Day as a floating type holiday. Christmas 2014 falls on a Thursday. This will give our employees more family time, but it also helps this mechanized, service-oriented organization be more efficient, effective, and ever-evolving. I ask that you please move forward with this item. Item five is to participate in the, to participate in the annual state severe weather preparing this sales tax holiday. EMA believes that this helps our citizens be better prepared. We all know how important that is, so I ask that you move forward with this item as well. Just as a footnote, I'm playing in the Pro-Am tomorrow, and I'm giving my gift package to the Prattville Public Library again. This, I recommend the public library to be the recipient of anyone's, anyone else's package that cannot accept it due to ethics rules. That, Mr. President, is the end of my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the mayor at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a report from the council and special committees, beginning with Counselor Striplin.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
Yes, sir. Vehicle maintenance committee met on September 8th at 4:00. We went over the capital outlay, which we have none for this budget. We discussed the budget for 2014-15, and then we also discussed Randall Lucas, the public works director, his vision for the vehicle maintenance. And just look forward to working with Mr. Lucas. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Chambly.
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles.
No, sir.
Counselor Boone.
No, sir.
At this time, we have a report on status of city finances from our finance director.
Everyone should have a packet in front of them for the financial information. The first sheet in the packet is the revenue report for the month of August. You'll notice that year-to-date, we are at 93.18% of our budget, and as far as the revenue is concerned, we are 83.33% through the year. So we're running well ahead of where we should be as far as revenue is concerned. You will see that so far this year, we've brought in $766,000 more than we did last year at this time. Let's see, the next sheet in your packet is the monthly tax breakdown comparison, just showing tax line by line, how we performed for the month of August. The next sheet in your packet is the council expense report, broken down by department. As far as expenses are concerned, we are 91.67% through the budget, and you will notice that so far this year, we have spent 83.01% of our budget for the year. We have also spent $1,733,000 less this year than last year. A good portion of that is due to the group health. We were behind last year, well, at the beginning of last year, and so we caught up, and that caused us that amount to be higher last year. The next sheet in the packet is going to be the wastewater enterprise fund income statement. You will see that they're running right in line where they should be. Their revenues are running ahead of where they are in the year, and their expenses are lower than where they are in the year, so they are running very positively. The next sheet is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. Same thing with them. They are running ahead of schedule on their revenue, and their expenses are below where they should be for this time of the year. The next sheet is the judicial special revenue fund. They also are running, running well. Their revenues are ahead of where they should be, and their expenses are lower than where they should be for this time of the year. The next sheet in the packet is the bank account balances report for the month of August. You will see the total of all city accounts at the end of August 2014 was $16,346,396.75, 78 cents, sorry. The last sheet in the packet is the council AP balance report, shows the total of city debt and accounts payable as of August 31st, 2014. It's $47,315,314.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Does any council member have any questions or comments for Mr. Mosley at this time?
Just a couple. We have a payment next month, is that correct?
Yes.
And we're good to make it?
Well, it's in November, but yes, sir.
Coming up, and everything else looks great.
And we will also be, we have on the council agenda tonight to go ahead and prepay a state revolving fund bond that's in the wastewater enterprise fund. It's about $1.3 million. Going ahead and paying that off, and in November, we will be paying off the rest of the 2007 out of the general fund.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Mosley? Thank you, sir. We appreciate you getting these to us as always in a timely manner that gives the council opportunity to look over them, and if they have questions, I'm sure they'll get with you as usual. At this time, we'll go into the agenda. We have a consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. Resolution Number One is to declare various re-lots to be a public nuisance and ordinary abatement per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amendment. Number Two is to set a public hearing to declare various re-lots to be a public nuisance and ordinary abatement per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amendment. Item Number Three is a resolution to adopt the Otto County 2014 Solid Waste Management Plan. We have a motion to place these three items on this consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, being a discussion on placing these items on the consent agenda. All in favor of placing these items on the consent agenda signify by raising the right hand. And these three items have been placed on the consent agenda. We have a motion to adopt these three items?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, being a discussion on these three items. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by raising the right hand. And the consent agenda is adopted. According to the regular agenda, item number one is to adopt the city of Prattville fiscal year 2014-2015 general operating fund, gas tax fund, depth service fund, capital projects fund, sanitation enterprise fund, wastewater enterprise fund, and judicial special revenue funds budget. This will held from September 2nd, 2014. It'll be in a discussion on item number one.
Mr. President, I'd like to offer an amendment.
You have a motion on the floor?
Not to be read. Oh, okay. Yeah. Thank you. For your consideration, I move that the 2014-15 physical budget be amended as follows. Line item 10-6403-09-654, city county services library be increased by $20,000. And line item 10-6404-10-658, community initiatives airport authority have their cap removed on their allocation of 10% of the lodging tax receipts projected for fiscal year 2014-15, resulting in a budget increase of $18,960. And line item 10-6404-10-678, community initiatives historic Prattville redevelopment authority have their cap removed on their allocation of 15% of the lodging tax receipts projected for fiscal year 2014-2015, resulting in an increase of $28,440, and the general fund reserve decreased by $67,400. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor to amend the budget with these items. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be in a discussion on these items. Counselor Bowles.
Mr. President, in our rules that the council has stated before, amendments are supposed to be given one at a time. Back in 2011, when President Argo was on the council, he put those rules in effect. Are we still under those rules? Or does the new council, do they go away?
You wouldn't be governed by those, but I don't recall if y'all adopted what you did.
We did.
When you came on board this last time.
I recall really.
I recall really clear, because I was the one doing this, and they put the rules and voted, we, the council voted for us to do this one at a time, so we literally vote each one in individual instead of all three. What do we need to do?
Off the cuff, I don't remember.
And I don't, Kathy, do you, could you have information on that just off?
I don't have it.
Okay. Without having that information, I'm going to ask that we go ahead and proceed. If we proceed wrong, Mr. McDowell, where will we stand?
Then if y'all were to go ahead and approve what he's talking about, you could ratify and affirm it at the next meeting, and I advise you to do that.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, on the airport and the HPRIC, do you mind explaining to me where those numbers are coming from and why we're wanting to do those?
Okay. I'll start with the lodging tax itself. Do you familiar with that? Okay, that was established several years ago by the council, but it was done with the permission of the local hotel owners and managers. They agreed to accept this fee and tax on their guests if the funds were to be specifically used for economic development and tourism activities. Several years ago, a plan was put into place in which the airport authority, the Chamber of Commerce, Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority, and the golf tournament were deemed to be entities that met the criteria of carrying out the mission, and that is expanding economic development and tourism. Initially, a percentage was established for each of these entities, 10% to the airport, 25% to the chamber, 15% to HPRA, 20% to the golf tournament, and the balance, 30% to be retained by the city for other projects that would meet the criteria of economic development and tourism. The concern I have is the city has capped two of these entities, airport authority and HPRA, with specific dollar amounts effectively rendering the percentage allocation mute. This year, the city projects the lodging tax fund will increase by $104,600. Without eliminating the cap, the true percentage for these two funds decreases more this year than it did last year. This year, removing the cap and increasing the Chamber of Commerce an additional 1%, the city is projected to retain approximately $392,000 for other projects that it deems appropriate to support economic development and tourism. With the exception of the golf tournament, each of these entities that are receiving an allocation from this fund very clearly understand that if the total revenue going into the fund decreases, their respective revenue decreases. Thus, from my perspective, this is a very good incentive for them to be good stewards of these funds. Also, none of these funds are released by the city until a contract for services is presented to the city, so we can and should hold these entities accountable. Does that help?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I heard Mr. McDowell's explanation, and I think possibly we can remedy this tonight with Counselor Striplin, if he will be willing. We have a first and a second, and we have a discussion on that. If you will be willing to put these before us one at a time.
Yes, sir.
Do you withdraw?
I will withdraw that motion.
Do we have, withdraw, Madam Clerk, do we need a second on that withdrawal?
Second.
That portion has been pulled off. Do we have any further amendments on this?
Yes, sir. I move that the physical 2014-15 physical budget be amended as follows. Line item 10-
Counselor Striplin, hold on.
Would you have Denise second the withdrawal? Since he did the motion and she seconded it, no, she just-
Second.
Okay. We want to make sure we get this right. We have a motion by Counselor Striplin to withdraw, and we're going to have a second by Counselor Brown, was the original second, second correct, Mr. McDowell? Okay? The motion has been withdrawn. Counselor Striplin, you may begin.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I move that the 2014-15 physical budget be amended as follows. Line item 10-6403-09-654, city county services library be increased by $20,000. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this item. In a discussion on this amendment. All in favor of amending this item signify by raising the right hand. This item is amended. Do I need to go on with the other ones, Mr. McDowell? Counselor Striplin?
Yes, sir. I move that the 2014-15 physical budget be amended as follows. Line item 10-6404-10-658, community initiatives airport authority have their cap removed on their allocation of 10% of the lodging tax receipts projected for fiscal year 2014-15, resulting in a budget increase of $18,960, and a general fund reserve decrease by $18,960.
So moved.
So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this item. Counselor Bowles.
This one goes to Ms. Brown. You sit on the airport authority. Have they asked for this?
They have not.
Do they need this?
Well, they're always doing it. They're constantly doing projects, so I mean, of course, they can always use it, and they were put in there, as Counselor Striplin said, with the cap, and they have gone by that, and they'll use whatever they get, but they do have projects ongoing all the time.
Do you think it would hurt if we held this for one year and had more time to try to straighten the caps out and work it out where it's actually written on paper? Because everything I'm checking on, I can't find anything where it's actually written that they don't have a cap.
I mean, I can only speak as a member of their, sitting on their board, and I'm not chairman, but I mean, they'll, they'll work with us in any way that they need to.
Any other discussion on this item?
Roll call.
Roll call, all in favor? Roll call.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Starnes.
Nay.
Counselor Wood.
Aye.
Counselor Chambly.
Aye.
Counselor-
Sorry. Nay.
Counselor Boone.
Aye.
If it passes, Madam Clerk, fight for Counselor Striplin.
Yes, sir. I move that the 2014-15 physical budget be amended as follows. Line item 10-6404-10-678, community initiatives Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority have their cap removed on their allocation of 15% of the lodging tax receipts projected for fiscal year 2014-15, resulting in an increase of $28,440, and the general fund reserve decreased by $28,440. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor for this amendment. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be in a discussion on this amendment.
Roll call.
Be in a discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Striplin. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Wood.
Aye.
Counselor- I'm sorry. Counselor Chambly.
Aye.
Counselor Starnes.
Aye.
Counselor Bowles?
Aye.
Counselor Boone?
Aye.
And this amendment passes. Now we're back to the original amendment, original resolution. Will it be in a discussion on it, on the original resolution?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Going back to these, I would ask the mayor and the finance committee to get with the prospective people that we're dealing with and have everything in writing and a contract in hand so that what we're dealing with is all, we're all on the same page on how we're dealing this money out, if y'all don't mind, before the next budget hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this resolution number one? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. And this resolution passes. Number two is a resolution to authorize. Before I even get to that, Madam Clerk, will you make sure that we can find the resolution concerning what we just dealt with, so we won't have to go through that again? Thanks. Resolution number two is to authorize the release of funds to call SRF dash two thousand and four for the wastewater department in an amount of one million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and nineteen cents. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas SRF two thousand and four was used to finance the extension of the Pine Creek Water Treatment Plant Interceptor. And whereas funds are available in the wastewater enterprise fund to pay the balance due on SRF dash two thousand and four. And whereas a forty-five day notice is required to pay the balance due and SRF dash two thousand and four is callable on October the fourth, October the thirtieth, twenty-fourteen. And whereas the city council desires to pay the existing SRF two thousand and four balance in the wastewater department. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that the finance director is authorized to pay the remaining balance of one million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and nineteen cents for SRF two thousand and four. And said funds are approved and appropriated from the fiscal year twenty-fifteen budget line items wastewater department enterprise fund slash SRF dash two thousand and four, principal payment and interest payment. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, be in a discussion on this resolution. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. And this resolution is adopted. Number three is a resolution to release funds for the purchase of one Bushmaster SL six oh one rotary cutter from Capital Tractor Incorporated for the wastewater department. It'll cost not to exceed six thousand, one hundred dollars. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has a need to purchase, purchase one Bushmaster SL six oh one rotary cutter for the wastewater department. And whereas said equipment is available from Capital Tractor Incorporated at a cost not to exceed six thousand, one hundred dollars. And whereas said equipment is a budgeted expense of the wastewater department. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville, the said funds in an amount not to exceed six thousand, one hundred dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Capital Tractor Incorporated. And funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year twenty-fourteen budget line item wastewater department enterprise fund capital outlay. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, be in a discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. And this item is adopted. Item number four is an ordinance to amend chapter nine, section nine, point two, point, point three, point two of the City of Prattville Personnel Policy and Guidelines and to name legal holidays for the City of Prattville. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir, be glad to. Be, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Prattville that chapter nine, section nine, three, two of the City of Prattville Personnel Policies and Guidelines shall be amended as follow. The human, human resource department shall post all list of council approved holidays at the beginning of each financial year. All full-time employees are eligible for holiday pay. Holidays that fall on Saturdays shall be observed on Friday and those that fall on Sundays shall be observed on Monday, holiday pay. If an eligible employee is required to work on the city's scheduled holiday, the employee shall be paid for the hours worked. All employees who do not work on holidays shall be paid holiday pay at the regular daily rate of pay. Holiday pay hours shall be the same as regular scheduled work shift. Holiday pay shall not count as hours worked when determining overtime pay or compensation time in lieu of overtime pay. To be eligible for holiday pay, an employee must be present at work or on approved leave for work day immediately preceding the following and paid holiday. Holiday pay shall not be paid to any employees if in a non-paid status. All employees is on approved sick or vacation leave during holiday pay shall be charged with holiday pay and now, and shall not be charged for sick or vacation leave. Be it further ordained that the following legal holidays shall be designated for the City of Prattville. Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, Friday following Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day, day following Christmas Day, New Year's Day, Martin Luther King, Robert E. Lee's birthday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, one floating holiday at the employee supervisor's discretion with prior approval. This change shall become effective upon its passage and its clause in, by law. I so move.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. In order for this item to be heard tonight, the rules must be suspended unanimously. We have a motion to suspend?
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Rules are now suspended. Be in a discussion on this ordinance. All in favor of adoption signify by raising your right hand. And this ordinance is adopted. Item number five is an ordinance also to exempt certain covered items from the municipal sales and use tax during the last full weekend of February twenty-fifteen as authorized by Act twenty-twelve dash two five six, generally referred to as the state severe weather prep, preparedness sales tax holiday. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of Prattville, Alabama as follows. Section one, in conformity with the Provisions Act twenty-twelve dash two fifty-six enacted by the Alabama Legislature, during the twenty-twelve regular session providing for a state severe weather preparedness sales tax holiday, the City of Prattville, Alabama exempts covered items from municipal sales and use tax during the same period, beginning at twelve oh one AM on Friday, February twentieth, twenty-fifteen, and ending at twelve midnight on the following Sunday, February twenty-second, twenty-fifteen. Section two, this ordinance shall be subject to all terms, conditions, definitions, time periods, and rules as provided by Act twenty-twelve dash two fifty-six, except that the time period shall only be specified in section one above and not for all years thereafter. Section three, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to certify a copy of this ordinance under the seal of the City of Prattville, Alabama and to forward said certified copy to the Alabama Department of Revenue to be recorded and posted on the department website. Section four, this ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication as required by law. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This item also must have the rules suspended. We have a motion to suspend?
Somebody.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Rules have now been suspended. Be in a discussion on this ordinance. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. And this ordinance is adopted. At this time, that exhausts our agenda. We have comments from persons present on any item that you wish to discuss. Please come up to the podium. Mayor, you have any closing comments?
Just like to recognize the Chamber of Commerce representatives we have here in the, in the audience. And they've been doing a lot of hard work for us over the last, long period of time. I'm not going to come up with a timeline on that, but like to see them out here because they have definitely been working for us to help increase the amount of tourism, amount of lodging taxes that are collected and they've definitely become a, a additional arm in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Striplin?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Starnes?
Yes, sir. First, I would like to say that we just passed a budget for the historical downtown Prattville, increased at twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, which brought it up to a hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, which is great. We have a beautiful downtown district. We have a beautiful High Point area. I brought this up in several locate, at several meetings. But I am concerned with Highway thirty-one and from the Walgreens to Larry Puckett that we're losing that ground. We have empty storefronts, we have empty stores and offices. And if we don't watch what we're doing here and not trying to improve those areas, we're going to have a West Montgomery in the middle of Prattville. So I just wanted to bring that to, to light and hopefully we can resolve that issue. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Chambers?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Boone?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming. We appreciate everyone coming tonight. As always, I'm going to take this opportunity to thank the mayor, all department heads, every last one of you for what you've done, for the work that you've all done on the budget, thank this council for what you've done. There needs to be some discussion and some work for the near future as we can see. But overall, everyone has done a very good job. So I encourage you to continue to, to do what you're doing. With that said, the next council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October seventh, twenty-fourteen at six PM. We have a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.